Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 on Tuesday, December 16th, 2014. A cold and windy night. We want to thank people for coming out to our meeting. This will be the last regular meeting of Historic 2014. We want to welcome again our student representatives, Mr. Manning, Mr. Tremble, for coming out on this cold night. We call the meeting to order. Clerk Saligopunko, please read the roll.
Thanks, Chair Murdaugh Keith. Member Harla, Member Johnston, Member Loffler Kemp, Chair Murdaugh Keith, I am here, Member Welty, Member Westholm, Superintendent Gronseth, Assistant Superintendent Crawford, Deputy Clerk Hanson, Secretary Tebow, Student Representative Manning, Student Representative Tremble. We are, we have a quorum, Chair Murdaugh Keith.
Thank you, Chair Saligopunko. Would you all please join me in honoring America as we recite our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Member Harla, is there a second? Second by Member Loffler Kemp. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? That passes seven nothing. We go to the reading and approving of the minutes. Regular school board meeting, November 18th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve? Member Harla moved, second.
Second.
Second by Member Westholm, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Seven nothing. Special school board meeting, November 25th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Member Westholm, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Loffler Kemp, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye opposed? That passes seven nothing. Special school board meeting, December 2nd, 2014. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Member Westholm, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Members Saligopunko, any discussion? Member Johnston.
I would just like to point out on page five of it that when there was a question was called, legal procedure was used. The person that was listed as making a motion was not acknowledged by the chair before that motion was made. That's legal procedure.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Six to one. Thank you. Now we go to school and community recognition. And again, the school board members will come up front. Member, Assistant Superintendent Crawford will lead us in this.
Members of the Board, this month I'm pleased to present our True Student School Board Representatives for Recognition. Teachers, principals, administrators, and school board members consider subjects and decisions which have a direct impact on our schools and our students. As we do so, we seek out research, best practices, the advice of community leaders, and of parents and families. And because they are directly impacted, we seek out the voice of students. Kobe Tremble, Denfau High School, and Paul Manning, Duluth East High School have well and ably served as student representative to the school board for this past school year. In this leadership role, they invested time and effort to learn more about how our school district operates and how decisions are made. They shared information with their peers and brought a thoughtful student perspective to our meetings. Their participation this year has helped immensely as we consider decisions impacting student achievement, school climate, and effective systems. Many thanks to both Kobe and Paul for their service to the Duluth School Board. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Also, members of the Board, we have Ann Craftifer, a teacher at Lester Park Elementary School, and Bernie Bernha, president of the Duluth Federation of Teachers, and Shay Morris, executive director of Second Harvest Leg Food Bank, here tonight to make a special presentation.
Meg Gorm from Chum.
Oh, and Meg Gorm from Chum is also here tonight. One in five children in San Luis County is at risk of going hungry. In despair of addressing this community concern, Ann helped organize the first annual Feeding Local Kids event. Fifth grade Lester Park students worked with WDIO-TV to help write and film a PSA to promote the event. Trivent Financial and the Duluth Federation of Teachers provided funds for donation bags. Under limit, helped design the bags and ready them for delivery, over 40 classrooms and student organizations took part in the event. Donation totaled $2,675, which was split between Chum and the Second Harvest Backpack Program, enough to provide more than 300 children with a weakened portion of food. Over 200 pounds of food was collected and delivered to Chum through this event. And they're presenting their check here, so I don't have to read that. Congratulations.
Now, we go up front for the Truth and Taxation Presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. This is the annual Truth and Taxation hearing, or the public hearing for taxes payable in 2015. And this is called for to be held on the night of our regular school board meeting in December, and that's why we're here tonight. Just as background, state statutes do provide for the legislature to establish a general and uniform system of public schools, in addition to making such provisions by taxation or otherwise, as will secure a thorough and efficient system of public schools throughout the state of Minnesota. This process is culmination, really, of something that started back last summer. It's not reflected on this slide, but in fact, the Department of Education starts to put out worksheets to school districts at that point in time, and we have to input to that levy certification, levy system. And we go through that process. In mid-September, MDE creates what is, at that point, the first draft of the levy limitation worksheets. And ultimately, by the end of September, sets the maximum authorized levy amount for each school district. This past September 16th, the school board did approve and set the maximum levy as recommended by MDE. And mid-November, the county auditor then mailed out proposed property tax statements to all property owners. And then you can see here, tonight, we are holding the public hearing on the proposed levy, held at our regular school board meeting. And as part of following this hearing, and as part of the school board agenda, the board will have a vote on this matter during the meeting. Part of what we present tonight is to give you a financial perspective of where exactly we are as a district. The column on the left is our beginning fund balance amounts, starting for this past year, in other words, as of July 1st, 2013. And then you have the broken out by fund, as you can see, with the total for all funds being $20,120,000 and change. The revenue amounts for last year, fiscal year 14, are listed in the second column, totaling $127,992,933. And the expenses are listed in the third column, again, for fiscal year 14, totaling If you add the revenues and subtract the expenses from the opening fund balance, you come up with what is listed then as the fund balance as of June 30th, 2014. And you can see that that adds up to $16,023,984. Items to note, we'll be covering this a little more later. For the general fund, the fund balance did increase from $1.9 million to $4.1, an increase of $2.2 million. The other reductions were essentially planned because they occurred in building construction and debt service, areas that we knew would, as part of the long-range facilities plan, those fund balances were to go down over that period of time. Starting then with the end of 2014 balance, we do, similarly, we do budget numbers to reflect our fiscal year 15, that we're right in the midst of now. These are the numbers that are our current budget numbers, as reflected at the end of September. Those would have been the numbers that were approved by the Board at the November meeting. And so you can see a revenue total here of $138,215,099. Total of expenses, again, for all funds, $136,52,822. With a projected fund balance then, at the end of fiscal year 15, of $18,186,261. Again, you note the projected increase of the fund balance for the general fund, and some of the other changes in the other funds that are really less significant than that change. We'll make additional copies of this slide and have those available for anybody that wants to look at that as we go ahead. This is a reflection of, again, the budget amounts for 2014, 15. Total revenues of all funds, $138,215,099, number that was read off of the prior slide. And you can see, this is, again, sorts this by fund. The general fund being the predominant, biggest part of our budget, with over 75% of the amount. And you can see the total there of $104 million. And the other funds are reflected, debt service at $21 million, community service, food service, building construction, internal service, and trust, working away around the pie chart there. These, again, are the numbers as of our current budget, as slightly modified from what was adopted last June. This chart reflects the only, the expenditures for only the operating fund, or the general fund. Again, as reflected, the amounts are consistent with what was expressed on the other slide. Total of $101,634,961. You can see that regular instruction in the blue is the largest piece here. Special education at just over 21%. And then sites and buildings at 13%. And then you have transportation, instructional, and other pupil support services, district school administration, district and school administration at 4.2%, district support services at 3.2%, and then fixed costs, which relates to some of our benefit items, pension items, and then vocational instruction at 1.2%. And again, those are our current year 2014, 15 planned expenditures in the general fund. This chart summarizes the levy that we are going to propose for tonight's approval. As a point of reference, you see the certified levy amount from those taxes paid in calendar year 2014. And that totals $32,363,567. Our pay 15 maximum levy limitation was $32,978,481. As I mentioned before, we are going to under levy in the area of unemployment expenses. We feel confident that we'll be able to do that, so we've reduced the maximum levy by $125,000. You can see the recommended levy included in this column here, at a total of $32,853,481. That breaks out as $11,232,000 for the general fund, $1,054,000 for the community services fund, and $20,566,000, or $566,000, rather, in the debt redemption fund. The change from last year to the recommended levy amount this year is a total of 1.5%, or $489,000, just about $490,000. You can see here the largest increase. Dollar-wise, is in the general fund, with a smaller number in community services, and $120,000 in debt redemption. Again, the total of 1.5%. Significant areas of change are highlighted on this slide. The first one is, one of the things that the legislature has done over the last couple of years is to add opportunities for local school districts to establish a kind of a baseline funding status. And in fact, this year, that number increased for districts in the state. For us, that number went up to $424 per pupil unit. The, you can see that that increase is $1.9 million in terms of levy authority. What happens as part of the same process then is the referendum amount that was approved in the fall of 2013 actually offsets that, because you don't get any additional revenue as part of the implementation of the local optional revenue. But what you do is create that baseline that will not, when the levy expires, you'll still have that local optional base. And so that's why it's taken out of the referendum column. In this case, you actually have a slightly bigger number, because we have a small enrollment decline projected, and that will levy fewer taxes then as a result. OPEB, or Other Post-Employment Benefits, is increasing by $138,000, debt service by $120,000, as you saw on the prior slide that we went over. And then, reemployment insurance is still going up, $118,000, which is part of the reason that we're confident that we can reduce the levy by the $125,000 that I mentioned This is the tax impact estimated by the county auditor's office. You can see that for both residential homesteads valued at $150,000, as well as commercial properties valued at $150,000, we actually have a reduction, a year-to-year reduction of $12.51 for residential homesteads, and $14.76 for commercial properties year-to-year. And basically, this is the result of the fact that there's been enough of a growth in property valuation within the boundaries of the district, that despite the fact that we have a 1.5% increase in the tax that we're collecting, the actual tax impact for anyone who is, this assumes property valuations are not changing. For anybody that has their property valuation that hasn't changed, then the numbers will go down by the amounts reflected on this slide. In summary then, the recommended levy increase is 400, just under $490,000, or 1.51%. Despite this increase, the tax impact results in a reduction due to the larger percentage growth in property values. And then just the third item is to note that the legislative action to increase the local optional revenue does not increase the overall tax levy, but shifts dollars from voter-approved to other, despite the November 2013 passage of the referendum. So that is one difference that people will see on their tax statements, is they will see a bigger number under other, and a smaller number under voter-approved as a result of that change to the local optional revenue. And Board members, that concludes my presentation. As part of this, we welcome anybody from the audience that would like to make comments during our comment period for the meeting. We'll go back and make another copy of that one page.
Can I have a review of this slide?
Oh, okay. I'm being told the handouts that are available are correct. Sorry, I didn't understand that. It was the overhead slide that was wrong, so, thank you very much.
At this time, will you bring any members of the audience that would like to speak on this topic? Again, there's still time to sign up if you'd like to speak on that. We are now going to go to public comment. Our first person, again, thanks for coming out. Our first person is Joan Peterson. Welcome, Ms. Peterson.
Superintendent Gronseth, Chair Murdaugh Keith, and members of the Board, my name is Joan Peterson. I once sat in your seat as a school board member. Making difficult decisions takes a lot of courage and compromise. My time on the Board was often contentious with lots of disagreement, mostly about facilities. But our disagreements did not result in public displays of anger or physical assault, interfering with staff personnel matters, nor in revealing confidential information. We have enough examples of people behaving badly towards others of late. Just read the news. What we don't need is elected officials doing the same. We discourage assaulting another verbally or physically, and have policies to deal with that. An assault is when someone fears that they may be harmed by another, even if it isn't physical. It does not appear that Superintendent, the superintendent and Board Chair made false accusations. There were witnesses. I have known Mr. Gronseth to be a caring, thoughtful, and effective superintendent. He responds to the public in a professional way. Mr. Murdaugh Keith was fair and balanced in his handling of the last special board meeting under very difficult circumstances. Mr. Johnston may feel as if he did nothing wrong and was only acting on behalf of someone he knows and loves. But actions speak louder than words. A school board member is in a position of authority over all district employees. That should make him or her more careful to follow procedures and policies and act civilly toward employees and students in public places, and anywhere else for that matter. The superintendent is Mr. Johnson's employee. How would it feel to have your boss shove you and speak angry words at you in a very public event? Mr. Welty has exhibited disregard for confidentiality, and has actually verbally attacked the school district, the superintendent, and even private citizens on his own blog. One can't say or do anything and not be held accountable. In addition, taking up valuable board meeting time with theatrics serves no purpose. The Board members who voted in favor of the process to remove Mr. Johnston did not do so lightly. They had good reasons and have acted in the interest of the school district and its employees and students. Serving as good public officials sets an example for all to follow. Following Board policies and procedures is essential for Board members. Otherwise, we might as well have a free-for-all where anything goes, and I don't think that's what anyone wants. Let's move on with the education of our students and supporting those who teach them. As I said in my campaign literature when I ran for the school board, kids are the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Our next speaker is Lauren Martel. Welcome, Mr. Martel.
I was going to back off a little bit on this, but now I'm going to read the whole thing. We all have our travails, of course, but it was nearly crazy for me to get into the election last year with what I had on my plate. I was actually relieved when I lost. Then I called Art Johnston. I called him because I knew what was going on. It didn't surprise me at all to learn the superintendent had been out in the schools, colluding with staff to get rid of a board member. I told Art, if you really want to be on that board again, I'll give you everything I have left, and I did. I drove down to the West End every chance I could get. I walked mile after mile again, knocked on hundreds more doors. In Gary New Duluth, I found Harla's literature stapled together at Bogren's and Nielsen's, the whole political machine colluding together, and it steeled me. I worked even harder. By the time election night came around, I was seriously exhausted. I just wrapped up in an Afghan and watched the results come in by myself in my house. I just wrapped up in an Afghan and watched the results come in by myself in my house. When it became evident that Art Johnston was going to win and win overwhelmingly, I cheered. I truly saw his victory as a triumph of democracy. If Mr. Johnston is removed from this board, whoever would replace him would not be the fourth district rep. He or she would have no legitimacy. The only thing that person would represent is another travesty of democracy. My government has set about to destroy the reputation of a good man, and only two things are restraining me from staging a protest against this action tonight. The first is the realization that the majority controlling this board has again miscalculated. They seem to think this is all going to be over in a month or two. This fight is likely to go on for a long time, raining a deluge of bad PR down on your heads and unfortunately, on this district as well. This action will only drive a wedge deeper into the long festering divide in our community and will completely obliterate any chance of restoring trust. I will watch you for now, but if push comes to shove, and I don't want to frighten poor Ms. Harla with that scary word shove, I will go to the wall to defend Art Johnston, a good citizen, a good man and a good friend of mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martel. Member Harla, are there any more speakers signed up? We will now hear from Barb Hulk. Welcome, Ms. Hulk. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Chair Murneke and members of the board. My children attended the Duluth Public Schools and received a high-quality education here. During their time in school, we held several bond referenda, which failed, and had school board members with a wide variety of perspectives. Discussion and, yes, confrontation during school board meetings was common. I've served on numerous district committees throughout the years, always with an eye toward improving the quality of education offered to every child living here. It has been my hope that our elected school board members felt the same way, that education was their priority. Unfortunately, I believe it is clear from the numerous school board meetings that I've attended over the past five years that we have had some board members for whom that has not been the case. The American Psychological Association defines bullying as follows. Bullying is a form of aggressive behavior in which someone intentionally and repeatedly causes another person injury or discomfort. Bullying can take the form of physical contact, words or more subtle actions. I believe Member Johnston has, in fact, intentionally and repeatedly caused other persons discomfort through his words and his actions. Member Johnston's rude and bullying behavior witnessed by me and many others during board meetings has been unconscionable. He's disruptive and disrespectful. He's raised his voice and spoken while other members have had the floor, speaking loudly in an effort to drown out their voices. He has consistently behaved in a manner that had a student behaved similarly, that student would have promptly faced some sort of disciplinary action. Repeatedly refusing to accept decisions made by district administration and/or a majority of the school board is further evidence of his bullying behavior, making it appear that no decision is final until Member Johnston's desired outcome is met. I believe that ISD 709's anti-bullying policy should not only be followed by all board members, we should be able to expect board members' behavior to exceed the minimum requirements of that policy. In addition, Member Welty seems intent on turning school board meetings into a three-ring circus with himself as the ringmaster. His rude and disrespectful behavior, as exemplified by the way he ignored the repeated requests of the chair at the special board meeting on December 2nd, would not have been acceptable in any of the district's classrooms. In addition, his release of confidential information regarding the potential sale of the former central high school site is further proof of his desire to be disruptive rather than helpful. I am grateful to the chair and the remaining board members for taking action December 2nd, 2014, which will hopefully result in board meetings where the education of our children is once again the primary issue on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hulk. We now move on to the reading and communication petitions. There are none, so we now move to item number 10, the report of our superintendent. Superintendent Gronseth.
Thank you, Chair Murneke. Well, December is a very busy month in the schools. Well, all of the months are busy, but December gets especially busy, and that is partially because we have so many programs and activities in the schools, and I've gotten out to a few of them. And I know that parking can be challenging at some of our elementary sites, but I assure you, the programs and the children knowing that you're there are well worth the effort to find that tough-to-find parking space. There's also a lot of student artwork that are up in the gymnasiums and the hallways, and it's just a really great time to get out into the schools and see all of the students' talents, and the music is fun. And I want to recognize all of the work that staff and volunteers put into making those programs possible. I know that it is a lot of work to decorate those halls and the gyms and the programs and all of the details that go into arranging those days, and they really are something that's treasured by parents and grandparents and community members. And I saw earlier this week on Duluth Memories, there was a public discussion of what do you remember from your childhood holiday programs and people kind of reminiscing about all the excitement of the day. And part of that discussion brought up another community discussion that I've, caused me to look a little farther into it. Part of that discussion was this whole piece that students aren't allowed, or people thought students weren't allowed to say Merry Christmas or have specific holiday greetings to each other. And so, I did a little research and found that there weren't any school newsletters or communication from any of our schools to that effect and to let people know that students are free to express themselves in their written assignments or their artwork or their greetings to people that they see and know, to greet them in any such way they feel appropriate and is appropriate. However, I also want to say that our schools serve a very diverse population. Our students and our families come from a wide variety of cultural and religious backgrounds, and so there may be many appropriate expressions for both students and staff during this time of year. And we do plan our programs to be a celebration that can be enjoyed by a diverse audience, no matter what their beliefs or their cultural background. So, Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and Kwanzaa and Winter Solstice and so many other different celebrations that go on during the season. And there are several more programs to go this week and next week, so I encourage folks to get out and take an opportunity to get into the spirit by attending. I also want to thank again so many student groups, like the one that we recognized tonight, for the service that they're providing to the community over the season. I know that we've collected food for food shelves, there's been students who have made blankets for blanket drives, buying gifts for the Giving Tree at several of our sites, and ringing Salvation Army bells, so many other great projects that are helpful to the community, but also build character in our students too and an appreciation for others. And I'll close with a quick reminder that winter break this year starts on December 24th, and students return to school, don't forget, on Monday, January 5th. And that's my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Gronseth. It'd be interesting to find out how many of the former band members and cheerleaders and dance team look fondly on the Marching in the Christmas City of the North Parade. Both my daughters did, and right now, the memories are still steaming, so appreciate that. We move on to item 11, and we begin with our education report. Member Harla.
Thank you, Chair. So, we had some good discussions at our education committee this month, a really great presentation and just really appreciated a robust discussion on what I'll be presenting tonight after that meeting. So, item A1 is our World Language Immersion Programs. Really excited to hear about this. This is looking at having a handful of our kindergarten classrooms in the coming year and years to follow be language immersion programs, where 90% of the time, they're taught in a language other than English and 10% is in that language. We currently already have one immersion classroom, that's our Ojibwe immersion classroom at Lowell Elementary School. And one thing I learned this last week, I appreciated, was that the students that are in that class are doing really well, learning Ojibwe, and then, school-wide, students are learning Ojibwe words. And that it's the language that's native to this area, it's a wonderful thing those students are learning and glad to see that it's something that expands from that classroom and is a school-wide cultural understanding, school-wide learning and supporting our Ojibwe culture. So, seeing that that is a success and our staff for many years have been doing research on what it would look like to have immersion classrooms in our community and in our schools. And so, looking at, so we'll continue having Ojibwe and looking at the languages of French, Mandarin and Spanish as ideas. Now, there aren't any specific, they haven't set any specific places yet, no decisions have been made. The administration is now gathering a team of people to discuss this and to move forward. A lot of schools are excited about this, and actually, it's not unique to Duluth that we're doing this. Many schools across the state are doing this. I actually have friends that send their children to a French immersion school down in the Twin Cities, and it's a reason that they actually sent their child to school. So, I see it as a great economic opportunity to bringing and drawing in new families into our school district. So, I'm really looking forward to that. It's also a piece that has some proven traits in reducing the achievement gap that is a big piece within our school district that we do need to continue focusing on. So, that's our first piece for the World Language Immersion Programs. The next presentation we had was on the Elementary Standards-Based Report Cards. Patty Bamanek and Susan Schmidt presented the Elementary Standards-Based Report Cards. This is a big deal for our school district. For the first time in many, many years, we'll be changing this, a report card, and I think oftentimes, we look at report cards as just about grades, but report cards are a communication tool between the teacher and the parents. And I'm glad to see that we have an updated communication, that we're working on updating that communication tool to the parents to let them know how that's, what those report cards will look like. One of the questions asked at the meeting was, "So, can you tell us what school districts across the state are doing this?" And the response was, "Well, we'll actually need to tell you which school districts aren't." So, we are on the trend, on the mark, and actually, that we invested this last year in our curriculum and getting in line with that. We're now able to really move to have streamlined curriculum and streamline and evidence-based models for that communication tool or the report card to parents. Now, there have been many teachers that have been involved at grade-level meetings, and our curriculum content specialists have been working closely with our teachers and our staff. I'm continually glad to know that we have the most educated teachers in the state, and so glad that we're using the education within and thankful for the leadership with our curriculum department and folks that are moving forward with updating these elementary based standard, elementary standards-based report cards. The next piece is a presentation of items requiring approval. We did have the second reading of Policy 5040, Transfers Within the School District. And Chair, would you like me to move this with the whole report? Okay, great. And so, it is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve Policy 5040, Transfer Within the School District for the second reading. A reminder to folks, and you can find more information online, this is about transferring within the school district from school to school, it's not about transferring into the school district from other school districts. So, there is additional information available on ISD709.org. This is the second reading of this, and if we pass it, this will be policy for the district. The next item, too, is the ISD 709 2015-2016 School Year Calendar, and it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the recommended ISD 709 calendar for 2015-2016 school year for approval. This last year, there was a bit of an odd change, actually, we'll see it this month, January 2nd was the day we would have sent students back to school, but we didn't want to have students come back from winter break and have one day and then head back. So, we were able, we put it back to where it will normally be, and so, I would just recommend folks take a look at the calendar for the coming year. School does start quite a bit later this year. That's not our choice, it's actually a state statute that we don't begin school prior to Labor Day, and there are many schools across the state that actually requested that they begin before and were denied, and so, we didn't follow in suit. We'll just continue to do what we need to do. So, school will start a little bit later this coming year and will end a little bit later. But we can also note with this, the last really great teacher's contract that we supported, we have some additional training days in there too for our teachers and our staff. The following are extended field trip requests. Lakewood Elementary 5th grade students will be traveling to Wolf Ridge in February. Homecroft Elementary 4th grade students will be traveling to Wolf Ridge in February as well. Congdon Elementary 4th grade students will be at Wolf Ridge in March. And Myers-Wilkins will head to Deep Portage Learning Center in Hackensack, Minnesota. And I distinctly remember going on a trip with, I think it was Mrs. Holm or Ms. Miller, I can't remember, and really appreciated my time at Wolf Ridge, and it gave me a time to connect with my teachers, connect with other adults and learn in a different way. And so, I'm glad to know that we have students that can take trips other places, but that we do have other community organizations that are coming into our school where our students can go to visit and can really continue that robust learning. And I know we do welcome partnerships from community members and people to get involved in the schools, and so, just, you know, want to continue that our schools are open, they're places, places for people to enter and to support our students and our community. There were no requests for access to student data, and there aren't any grants or awards to accept, but I would like to read the name of Joseph R. Sanis for October 30th. It is recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and receive Joseph R. Sanis's graduation, diploma request. So, Chair, I appreciate the opportunity to serve this last year as Education Committee Chair, and I move this, my committee report.
Thank you, Member Harla. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Member Welty, discussion? Member Welty.
I'd like to withdraw item A1, World Language Immersion, for some comments.
Any others? Member Harla, did you want to? Okay. Member Welty? Are you ready? Oh, I'm sorry, Member Westom?
Two, A1.
Okay. Now, Member, well, let's see. Member Westom, turn off. There you go. Member Welty.
Thank you, Chair Murneke. I'd just like to make some comments. It was an excellent report from the chairman of the Education Committee meeting. I'd like to point out some of the things that we discussed at this discussion in the Education Committee meeting. As I recall, the languages that we were talking about, and I think I'm missing one, were Mandarin Chinese, Spanish and French, much to Mr. Crawford's delight, as a fluent French speaker. Am I missing a language? Those were the three. And of course, there's a talk about Ojibwe because we have recently set up an Ojibwe immersion program, and I believe that's in, up on the Rice Lake Road, Lowell, Lowell Elementary. We had a discussion about just how the immersions would work. Fascinating discussions. They talked about two different varieties of immersions. One was 50/50 and one was 90/10. That's how much of the classroom time would be spent as full-time French-speaking, Spanish and Mandarin. 50/50 would be 50% time in English and 50% in the targeted language. And the other one, which apparently is becoming quite popular, is 90/10. Now, the discussion also had to do with the emphasis that we're hoping to put on the elementary schools when we have that wonderful plasticity in young people's minds and they can pick up new languages and new vocabulary like a sponge. It was asked to what extent our finances might It was asked, to what extent our finances might allow us to extend immersion classes like this to the secondary level, and that seems to be a little beyond our reach at the moment. But we did have a couple of student advocates, one of whom is sitting to my immediate left, Mr. Manning, who was very delighted that we were going to be able to start putting more emphasis on language. Just my comments, I'm sure there's more that could be added. It was a very delightful discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Welty. Member Slaya Punkle.
Thanks, Chair Murnicki. And I know Assistant Superintendent Crawford, I have talked to you of some of my questions, but I do want to make a couple of comments also, and I had some questions about, you know, how many students, the cost of this. I do know that this would be successful. The one thing that I would like to see, though, because I know students would probably only have a chance to start this within the first two years, and then it would be kind of closed. So, I personally would like to see languages offered to all of our elementary students K-5, or at least start kindergarten, first grade with all of the students, because, I mean, if it works, which I know it does, there's all the research in brain development, I hate to see us start limiting, we're maybe only twenty to forty students from our community, or however many, I mean, I know it would be probably under fifty. Have that opportunity, I would really like to see all of our elementary students, or at least all of our kindergarten and first grade, or second grade, or whatever, because, like Member Welty said, they are sponges, they do pick up on this really early, or really easily. And, you know, that is just something, especially with all the brain research. So, I have a little bit of concern about this, because we'd be spending money, and we're kind of going back to the magnet schools, which we were trying to duplicate across the district, the successes, like Lowell Magnet School. I'd like to see what Lowell had across the district, because that was a very successful magnet, and I know it was being looked at to extend to the whole district, and of course, we ran out of funds, but I would prefer to use the funds wisely in, I guess, extending it to all of our children. Same, like, I'd like to add on to music and art and physical education, just because all of those have a lot of research that show success of kids. So, anyway, those are my two cents, and I know you'll be getting some more information back to me about cost, about some of the limitations, and I mean, I do have experience. My daughter's good friend came from an immersion school down in the Twin Cities, so I know it works, but I just don't want to narrow that focus. I really want us to promote it for all kids, and I think it would really help the school district, too. Thank you.
Merci. Monsieur Menin.
Gracias. Yeah, it was a great education meeting we had last week, got some really great info about this program, and I just want to say again that I'm super excited about having a language immersion program. Talking with the students, their biggest concern was that they can't become younger and do the program themselves, so not too bad of concern to have. Yeah, and with how it sounded, with it being implemented, it sounded like Mr. Crawford suggested that it would be implemented slowly, because the teachers would be naturally added for a specific language, so if they're native, and otherwise, you'd have to, like, get rid of a lot of teachers and add new ones of different languages over time. So, I personally think that the slow process would help a lot, even though that excludes my sister in elementary school, but can't get everything. Yeah, so, just an excellent program. I'm really excited to see this be implemented, and if there's some way students can have input, that's always great, I'd like to see that happen. So, as we implement these great languages and make our schools a big magnet for kids who currently aren't involved in public schools, it's an excellent program to be going forward with, so, yeah, keep up the good work with that.
Merci. Senior Westholm.
Flipping language. Yes, it was, felt like I had to answer in Spanish, and I know it. One of the plus things about this, and I think I remember in either graduate research or education programs, or maybe it was undergrad, but one of the values of learning another language is it helps, actually, with the native language. You learn it, you know, dissecting a foreign language, there's some carryover in what you are learning also in English language, so, I see lights on, so maybe one of you guys can speak to that better than I can.
Show love for temp, and that'll be my last one.
I'm not going to talk in Danish, even though I'm tempted. Okay, I just wanted to make a comment. I mean, I think a lot of people have spoke for this already, and we really did appreciate Paul Manning and Keir Zimmerman's input as students, but I have received a lot of phone calls and emails about this, and have had some great conversations with parents, both parents who are currently in our district and parents who have chosen other options but would like to come back for this reason. And I just also wanted to state, I have friends in the Twin Cities whose kids have done immersion programs, and just, I'm excited for us to move forward with it and do it slowly so we do it all so well. And as I had mentioned at the Education Committee meeting, just if we are able to move forward, making sure we do it by kindergarten roundup, so we can help educate parents, or let parents know which schools may be offering it, so I just stress that again. And thank you again, students, for your input.
Thank you. Representative Tremble.
I could say I'm a little bit jealous of these elementary school kids. I would have loved, well, maybe not my past self would have loved, but my future self would love to go back in time and be able to do something like this. I independently study languages, because I just find languages fascinating, and I think that the advantages of being bilingual or even trilingual are just insurmountable, and the earlier that you start kids learning something like this, the better it's going to be for them, and, I don't know, saying something like this just puts a smile on my face, to be frank.
Thank you so much. Representative Menin.
Yeah, just quick with what Mr. Westholm said about it improving your native language, completely agree. Some of the people I know that are the best at, like, English and analyzing different, like, literature elements, they're usually the ones who are fluent in a different language, so they can really analyze just the structures of words and different things, and it really amazes me, so it'd be great to have our kids be able to do that, too. Oh, and just a quick thing, touching on, sorry, the high school relation to this program. Yeah, it's a program we can talk about later, but just what I think personally right now is that as they go through the program, they'll become, hopefully, a large amount of kids will be bilingual in it, and then perhaps later, we can just continue the current language programs we have, if they want to learn a third language, perhaps. They're, took the French immersion program, then they just move into Spanish, because they're interested in learning a third language. I think that'd be a great way to go with it, and I think that's what a lot of international schools do with their type of language learning, so, yeah, that's it.
Wonderful. Member Harla.
Just one more comment. As we've been talking about this, I can't help but to think how, with all that's going on in the world, so much of what happens comes down to not understanding other cultures. So, I feel like this is also a citizenship lesson for our students, too, and glad to see that they can really learn to be citizens of the world, learning a lot of different backgrounds, so, thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent Crawford, would you like to comment at all, or have we covered it all? Okay, that's a thumbs up. Mr. Westholm, if you want to hit your button, you wanted to talk about 2A1.
Yeah, just some observations about it. I'm really glad to see this finally being put into print, because really, and I sat on this transfer committee for ten or twelve years, and we kind of wrestled sometimes when we didn't have guides. We knew what we were going to do, but it would've been much nicer if we had some language that would back up, back up what we were going to do. One of the things I was surprised at when I first sat on this committee is, my thoughts were, especially when you start to get into the middle school, high school ages, that we'd have lots of, not lots of people, but more than a couple of people looking at transferring, because they liked that basketball coach better than at this school, and so on, and we found very little of that, you know, we found very little of that. The most common one I remember is that my older daughter got permission to go to East, and she's now a junior, and I'd like my younger child to go there, too, and we almost always okay those, because it wouldn't make sense, well, that's what they said, you mean, we're going to have to now operate under with two schools with our kids instead of one, and so we usually approve those, but I really like the way this thing has been structured. It is logical, I think it's fairly simple for people to understand, and we need to really advertise that to people at the beginning of the year and various times, so that they know where to look if they're considering it, so. Another game that we played, we discovered sometimes that we had some kids going over to Superior, and of course, they were lying about where they lived, and some people from Superior coming over to Duluth, and of course, we did have to do a lot of parent checking, because somehow, we got wind of this rumor, so, of what was going on, so. I enjoyed my ears on it, but it was, it was a good place to be for, looking for kids.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Education Committee report. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes seven, nothing. Thank you. We now move to the Human Resources Report. Member Welty.
Just let me jot down last couple notes on education. Yes, I will begin by noting that perhaps fortunately, the Human Relations Committee meetings was a little bit shorter, only about a half an hour. We've had a great many over the last few months that have been an hour in length, and since I remember meetings many years ago that were not much more than fifteen minutes in length, maybe we are returning to a new normal, which I think many of us would be grateful for. I will begin with the Human Resource Action Items, just the litany of different categories of things, and how many people they apply to. Certified Appointments, there are three. Certified Co-Curriculars, one. Certified Leaves, eight. Certified Long-Term Substitutions, three. Certified Permanent Increase, one. Certified Resignations, one. Certified Retirement, one. Certified Temporary Increase, thirteen. Non-Certified Appointment, fifteen. Non-Certified Extensions, one. Non-Certified Leaves, nineteen. Non-Certified Long-Term Subs, four. Non-Certified Permanent Increases, three. Non-Certified Resignation, six. Non-Certified Retirements, two. Non-Certified Temporary Decreases, one. Non-Certified Terminations, one. Non-Certified Temporary Increases, fourteen. And one, Non-Certified Reclassification. Several items that we talked about, we have the approval of two contracts, Non-Certified Business Division Administrators Association. Is it two or one? Two contracts or one? Is the resolution for?
I'll let Mr. Sworzki answer that.
It's two, two-year contracts.
I understand, thank you. All right, very good. So, that is the next item. If you would like to proceed with that, I'd be happy to read it, if you would like me to, Chair Murnicki.
If we could read that, if you would read that resolution.
I would be very happy to. Mr. Chairman, I move a resolution concerning Non-Certified Business Division Administrators Association, resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreements between Independent School District 709 and the Non-Certified Business Division Administrators Association, a summary of which is in the hands of all School Board members, be approved and adopted for the periods of July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2015, and July 1st, 2015, to June 30th, 2017, inclusive, and that the chairperson and clerk of the School Board be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. Mr. Chairman, I move Resolution HR-12-14-3219, dated December 16th, 2014.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Johnston, discussion. You don't have a, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes seven to zero. Mr. Welty, Superintendent's preview, review.
Yes. Yes, the performance review of the superintendent by the members of the School Board has been conducted by, over the last six or seven weeks, and tonight, in fact, we had a closed meeting to have each of us review and read through the general analysis, and I think it's fair to say that the general analysis was positive for the superintendent. And it was a closed meeting, the responses are most, for the most part, sealed, and if anybody would like to have, make any comments about the things that we talked about, with some restraint, I think that would be possible at this point.
I think what we'll do is, we'll go through the Human Resources Committee, and then we can pull that and have discussion, if that's okay. Is that all right with everybody? So, we can pull it. All right, so we'll finish that, thank you.
All right, then, to go on to informational items, there has been some discussion of revisions to the next superintendent's review process. We also discussed that very, very briefly at the conclusion of our analysis and review of the current review. There was a couple of comments about perhaps School Board members would like to have some questions they could answer, do not know, or have not experienced, as opposed to feeling they have to rank every single question. Then there was a discussion at the HR Committee meeting of FTEs, a comparison. I don't happen to have that documentation here. As I recall, one of the main things was trying to figure out how many FTEs, that's an acronym for Full-Time Equivalent, referring to teachers who sometimes are part-time people, or it might be point six, or point eight, or point two, and we need to round them up for financial reasons to figure out how many people we have. I think there was a comparison between the regular classroom teacher, FTEs, and counselors, who are not classroom teachers as such, FTEs, and I think there was one other series of categories that fit somewhere else. So, that was one of the discussions that we had, and then that was the end of the discussion for the HR Committee meeting that I recall or have on my agenda.
Move the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would move at this time the adoption of the minutes for the Human Resources Committee meeting of December 16th, 2014.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Westholm. Discussion, I'm going to pull 3A. Anybody else? Member Harla?
It was the same as yours, actually.
I'm sorry?
The same as well.
Okay. Member Johnston?
Oh, wait, sorry, sorry. I was incorrect. I meant to say 2B, sorry, 2B.
2B. Okay. Member Johnston?
3B.
3B. And we will go in order, I think, we'll start with Member Harla. Let me hit your button.
Well, thank you very much, Member Welty, for your report. I just, the reason that the superintendent's performance review is done in closed session, I just want to remind the public, it's done in a closed session because it's a personnel issue, though he is a public employee, it's personal information, and as his employers, we do have that conversation, but just want to thank the superintendent for his service, and heard a lot of positive feedback from community members, and we were also able to chat with him about different areas that we can all grow in. So, thank you very much for your service and for a good discussion.
Thank you. I pulled 3A. The superintendent's review is required each year, and we've used this instrument before, and we are under a process right now of revising it. We're going to go to Minnesota State School Board Association next month, and there is a workshop on superintendent evaluations. Mr. Westholm brought up a little tweak that he'd liked, did not observe, as one of our opportunities, so I'm looking forward to this. We'll basically have something more on this probably in February and March. Okay, Member Johnston on this topic? Okay.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to add, we've had some good discussion on this already, want to, and hope we can have more. I'll be going down to the session, the MSBA as well. Again, I've mentioned before, and superintendent, and I've talked about this, and that I think I would like to see more hard criteria when it comes to the continuous improvement plan what the superintendent has put forth, and which we've accepted, some of those things are about student enrollment, class sizes... are about student enrollment, class sizes, achievement gap, expulsion rates. I'd like to see all those certainly referenced in this and I'm looking forward to working to try to incorporate those in a future review.
Thank you. 3B, Member Johnston.
This is the FTE?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Welty didn't have a sheet, but did want to make a couple of comments on the sheet that we did get. We've increased, I believe it was 20, about 24 FTEs this year, which is absolutely fantastic. It's something that we've been looking for, for a long time and I certainly support that as, hopefully some of that is based on the referendum that passed. We got about 16 at least, that's what we're hoping for. Plus, there was other funds that came in and other various areas that also allowed us to increase. I do want to point out that we have a long way to go and this is a start. I think we have to go further. We did increase about 24 this year. Unfortunately, last year was the lowest number of FTEs, teachers that we've had, at least I can go back to, which is quite a few years, about 20 to 30 years, it's the lowest number. So, increasing, we've increased now about where we were about a year and a half ago, about two years ago, actually. And that concerns me that we have to increase this faster, we have to lower our class sizes. I'm certainly looking forward to working on that, but again, we have a long way to go and I'm hoping this is a start.
Member Welty.
Thank you, Chair Murdaugh. I confess, I remember this conversation, this portion of a conversation that sort of relates to the FTEs. I can't recall if it was in HR or education, it would have fit in probably either, but I do recall requesting some financial estimates of what it would cost for us to in some way restore the seventh hour or the zero hour and our administrator said that they would try to put together something for us to review and I think the public knows that a lot of people miss that additional hour that gave kids a chance to take additional languages or music or other things that were particularly appealing to them and would draw them into the classroom. So, I just wanted to note that we had that request and either for education or HR, hopefully we'll be able to review that and maybe make some plans accordingly.
Thank you. I was laid off four times when I was young and I still remember going to a faculty meeting and a principal I really looked up to, Nick Sedar, said, "God, I'd like to just go one year without having to cut teachers." And you could see the pain in his demeanor just to have to call somebody in and say, "You know, you probably won't be here next year." And I've been in that office, I've done that and I hope this is a trend. I hope this is something that the Duluth School District can turn around and start moving upward. Members, Superintendent Grandseth?
Yes, I too have been on both sides of the layoff piece and it doesn't feel good on either side of it. I wanted to first, Member Johnston had said something about the fewest teachers, that last year was the fewest teachers that we've had, but I just wanted to remind you that you'd have to look at the teacher-to-student ratio and not just the number of teachers because from, I mean, 20 years ago, we had, I don't know, 25,000 students and now we have 8,000, so the number of teachers is going to be different based on
Enrollment.
The enrollment and the ratio. So, I just wanted to make that point. And then, the seven-period day piece that Member Welty brought up from that discussion, we will, rather than have an item specific to that, we'll discuss that as part of a budgetary discussion that will be over the next three or four months and be included with, you know, many other things on the list, both as investments or in redesigning or reorganizing. Sometimes we have to take some things off the list to add things to the list, so those will all be a part of the discussion as well as elementary embedded PLCs and what that could look like too. So, we'll have several things to discuss over the next few months budgetary-wise.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
Sure, yeah, the superintendent is absolutely correct. I only have data back about, I guess it looks like about 12 years, we went from a 13.4 student teacher ratio to 14.6 is the latest one I've got, we haven't got the figures for the last year. So, the student teacher ratio has went up, hopefully we can get that to go down, but we have a long way to go and this is a good start.
Thank you. Member Welty.
For no particular reason, except maybe for one upsmanship, Mr. Chairman, I would just point out that I was speaking to a former school teacher in the Duluth Schools who pointed out that he had experienced 14 layoffs
Oh, my goodness.
In his experience and he remembered every one.
And thank you for that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Human Resources Committee Report. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed. That passes seven to nothing. And now, I want to remind the members that after the business report, we do have to vote on a special resolution, so make sure we hang around for that. The business report, Member Laffler Kemp.
Great, thank you, Chair Murdaugh. I want to start by saying we had also a robust, almost two-hour business committee meeting and I also want to just start by thanking Mr. Hanson for your truth in taxation report, very clear, very transparent, and appreciate the work he did to get ready for that tonight. Want to start with the financial report and at our business committee meeting, we had Deborah Milline who is with, she's a representative from Whitley who does our audit, spent a lot of time with us going over the report and answering a number of questions and so under the financial report, page four is a preliminary financial statement on audited for the month ended October 2014 are attached. Moving down on approval of payment of claims, that was an extra on our board book, budget revisions on page 17, wire transfers, page 19, investment transactions, page 20, the WADM projections, page 21, fundraisers, page 22. There were no bids or RFPs. Quote reports, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve the contract with Voyager's Bus Company and you can read there, we had Ken Williams, the Director of our Transportation, present this to us and answer questions about transportation and the who responded and the bid process and proposed agreement that was negotiated. And again, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve the contract with Voyager's Bus Company. There were no policies and regulations under contracts, change orders and leases. Under contract, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve the contract with TECLC in the amount of $47,440 and just note the explanation there, it involves career and technical education and the Perkins Grant funding. No changeovers, no leases. And then Chair Murdaugh, would you like me to proceed with the resolutions?
Let's do, yeah, we're going to have to do that, so let's start with 5A, please.
Okay. And for the public, that's again on page 31 and this is the one that we do at each meeting to accept donations to the School Board. And I move Resolution B12143216, acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, whereas the acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations and you'll see a list of a number of individuals and some organizations there. I move to approve again this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Siligapunko. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes seven to zero. 5B, please.
Okay, and for the public again, that's on page 32 and it's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve Resolution B12143217 and this is a certified tax levy. And be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 709 St. Louis County, Minnesota to hereby set the tax levy for 2014 payable 2015 as listed in the resolution, $32,853,481 and I move to approve this.
Is there a second? Second by Member Siligapunko. Discussion. Member Johnston? Whoops, yeah, I think, okay, Member Johnston. I think it was Member Welty then you'll, so we'll start with Member Welty.
Thank you, Chair Murdaugh. If that's no
He's faster on the button.
My fingers get a lot of practice. I would point out that this is compared to the previous two years where we had 11% increases, quite modest. I think there was talk that this was 1.9% increase and in fact, if the value of our housing goes up, I believe it was maybe down to 1.5%. Am I roughly correct, Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
I don't have my, Mr. Hanson, would you answer that, please?
Sure. The change from 1.9% was correct, Member Welty, for the maximum amount that we could levy with our $125,000 reduction to that, that did drop the percentage increase to 1.5%.
Well, that's the right direction for the taxpayers. I will be making a comment a little bit later on about what the district needs. Member Johnston pointed out that the records that he has shows that we have about 1.2 more children per teacher and of course, that's not necessarily classroom teachers and there has been a considerable concern about large classes, I think in the secondary schools. It would be my contention that we're not going to be able to bring that down and I think that would be an important thing to do. Unless we have adequate revenue, that would require, I think, an extensive discussion for the public to consider our educational needs. But I don't think, considering what the city and the county have been doing, that this falls out of line and is reasonably conservative, so I'm guessing that the taxpayers will not have any particular objection to it and neither do I.
Member Johnston?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also welcome a low, was it 1.2, 1.5% increase, but I do want to put out, and we do have to look at the history on this as well. This is certainly the highest tax levy we've had, there's records that I can go back, which is back to about 20 years now. Back in 2001, which was the lowest we had, was 8.1 million. That was lowered to that amount after the legislature decided that we had to shift the main funding of schools from local sources, local property taxes mainly, to state for more equitable education. That lowered our taxes down to 8.1 million. We're up to 32.9 now. If you just run the numbers with your calculator, that's in 14 years, that's averaged a 12% increase in over 14 years. So, we've certainly had a large increase and despite back, the intent back 13, 14 years ago was to try to remove such an increase, we went up very dramatically. Some of that's of course for the long-range facility plan, some of it is other things which, you know, I'd like to find out what. Again, we've had an increase in student teacher ratios at that time as well. So, it concerns me that the money that we've had, this 12% increase a year for the last 13 years, hasn't been going to the classrooms as we would certainly like and that I would certainly like and that does kind of concern me. If we go back since I was on the board, we've had a 14.7 million increase. Again, I'm talking about the total tax certification here, that's how I look at everything. And that, since I've been on the board for years, five years, that's a 20% per year increase. So, yes, it's good that we finally had a decrease in that, but it's still quite sizable and remember here, I think it was six years ago, we were promised that the long-range facility plan would be tax neutral. Obviously, a 20% increase in the last five years is showing that that has not been the case. You know, 12% over the last 13 years showing that that's not been the case. So, I welcome this leveling off, but it certainly concerns me the history.
Member Harla?
I just want to note, so 12 months into my term, you have a steep learning curve on the board and appreciate going through the Minnesota School Board Association trainings where they show us graphs of, by the time I graduated high school, there was a significant amount of money being funded to schools from the state level and then we all received a Jesse check in the mail and though that was a nice tax bump for people's personal pockets for that one time, it really devastated the classrooms and devastated a lot that was happening statewide. And so, we can look at those different pieces, but we're walking out the ramifications of a very different tax structure that we had for many years in our state and I'm glad to see the direction that our state is going in currently. But I do want to just note again that estimated tax impact was a great sheet to see for, even though there's an increase we're seeing on residential homesteads for taxable value for a house, if you're $150,000, the annual change would be actually at $12.51 in your favor. So, just glad to see that, would encourage any members of the public to take a look on our website at this and I'm just very thankful for your presentation.
Superintendent Grandseth?
Actually, I was going to say kind of something similar about Jesse checks, but I know that, you know, if you look at the history of school funding in just about any state, there's this wavering between more state aid and more local aid and in the times of Jesse Ventura, it went more towards state aid and in the times of Palenti, it, well, it wasn't times of Palenti for us, but it moved, it shifted more towards local and now with Governor Dayton, it's shifting a bit back more to the state. So, that's certainly not all of it, but I think that it's a piece of it that shifts between state and local, aids being the major financier of educators. So, I'm not sure about the numbers through history, but I know that that has a big part of it. I also want to point out that, you know, I wasn't the superintendent during the majority of the long-range facilities plan, but I know that it wasn't ever said that it was going to be tax neutral. I know that there was always a number that was attached to the long-range facilities plan as a base with the increase each year. I couldn't tell you the numbers off the top of my head, but I know that it wasn't cost-neutral going into it. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Member Johnston?
Sure, there is one item that I had forgot to mention on my brief talk and during the truth in taxation, we have, was pointed out that we have a building construction fund balance of $6.2 million and that is something that I know Member Welty and I have asked to have discussions on that. We have a $6 million fund balance. We have a six million dollar fund balance for the construction. We seem to be burying reports, but the auditor says and what we say about whether or not, whether or not it's a balance or not, but I'm going to assume here that this is a balance. The auditor was wrong. But since we have a six point three million, six point two million dollar fund balance, I think that we could have and should have been addressing that at this point. And I think that that could have been reflected in telling the people that, hey, we've got a six million dollar funds left over. Instead of raising up what was it, six hundred thousand dollars, we could have maybe kept it even even or even had a reduction in taxes. So those are discussions that I would certainly like to have in the future about, I think, trying to be fair to the taxpayers as well as trying to keep money into the schools as we want into the classrooms. I would like to point out about the whole, what happened in two thousand one, wasn't just Jesse Ventura, there's been numerous court cases that drove that. The court cases drove the inequity between certain school districts and others. For example, Net Lake School District, for example, had an extremely poor tax base and consequently had an extremely poor funded school versus, say, something like Edina that had a very high tax base. And the courts went through courts, I believe there's still cases going through courts on that. And the courts decided that our constitution says we must have fair and equitable, I forget the wording is, but something about like fair and equitable funding for all students in Minnesota, and it could not be based on. And the courts ruled that such disparity between, for example, Net Lake and Edina, I'll use Edina as an example, is not acceptable from a constitutional point of view. So that's another aspect that we're there. I'm not quite sure why the disparity now is going, and everything's going back to the property tax thing. But I think that probably the courts are taking note of that, and I would assume that we're going to be going back the other way. But my point of bringing that up is that we have had a significant tax increase recently as well as back to two thousand one.
Member Welty.
Thank you, Chair Murnicki. The superintendent is quite right about how the funding in all states for public educational waivers. I just graduated from high school two years before when the Minnesota Miracle of nineteen seventy-one was authorized. And like most miracles, they fall in hard times. The state was going to try to make up for districts like Net Lake that have poor property bases by giving the state revenues, both income taxes and sales taxes to districts. And that has gone back and forth. And Jesse Ventura, who I once visited as a school board member with the community of Duluth, he was just one of many people who had an impact on that. I'm glad that member Johnston mentioned the six point two balance in the long-range facilities plan that we currently have. I know that it's sort of been an article of faith since before I was on the school board that operational monies and building funds cannot go back and forth. They're, they were authorized for one purpose and they can't go back and forth. However, for about three years running, we took, I think it was six million dollars out of the general fund and used it to pay off LRFP debt servicing. That has finally come to an end. But I see this six point two million, and I'm just wondering if this money is somehow designated only for new building or for debt servicing, and if it would be available to put in the general fund and might find its way into the classroom. It's not really quite part of the discussion of the certified tax levy payable that we're talking about here, but I would be curious in having that answered if it's possible.
Let's go with Mr. Hanson first, and then Superintendent Grundsath. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, member Welty and members of the board, the use of those monies in that account are, in the building construction account, are limited and restricted, and they are limited to construction purposes, be they through alternative facilities or through, for new construction, and would not be eligible to move to the general fund for general purposes.
Superintendent Grundsath?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, for that. And I was also going to say that that number may not represent everything that has taken place thus far. Also, I want to bring you back to a few months ago. I can't remember which month it was that Mr. Leiter came and presented a ten-year maintenance plan that included some of the work that remains to be done on our buildings. Along the way during the long-range facilities plan, there were some decisions made when we thought, boy, we better make sure that we have the money that we need to complete these projects. So there are pieces of some projects, almost, I think, I think just about every project had some add alternates that were not completed during the long-range facilities plan. Mr. Carey is working with building administrators and district staff to determine priorities on work that is left to be done, and will be coming to you with their recommendations as Mr. Leiter said he was going to a few months back.
Member Welty?
Yes, I'm not sure, Mr. Leiter, if I was on the board when you brought the first ten-year facilities plan, but I was probably around about that time, and I do think that that's a very wise thing to do, is to look into the future, to anticipate construction needs and repair needs and things of that sort. So I would understand why we would do that. I think I still have a question that perhaps we can discuss at some later date about if money could be transferred into debt service, why can't it be untransferred and sent back? But I'll defer that to some other meetings, because I'd like to get home earlier tonight.
Member Johnston?
Just a quick question there, probably to Mr. Hanson. We have the six point two million, I'm certainly looking forward to discussions, but is an option, would there be an option to lower our property taxes? Would that be one of the options that could be used, that could be, money could be used for?
There would be opportunity to move from, move monies from building construction into debt service that could potentially serve to reduce a levy. But again, as pointed out, I think it's the most prudent for the board to hear this as part of a larger discussion of what other needs we have out there, particularly as the superintendent mentioned, the particular items that were to be considered as part of the long-range facilities plan that were intentionally set aside in order to make sure that we had funds left at the end of the project. So I think it's, the technical answer is yes, and, but I think it's fruitful to have it in a bigger discussion too.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate that, absolutely. But just want to make sure that that is an option, like to have, make sure the public knows that that could be an option. Whether or not it is or not, that's up to us to decide, but just want to know that it is an option. We would like to make a correction to member Welty, not a correction, but just reminding him that, yes, we have transferred six million in the past, but we are also transferring about three million a year. We still have three CLPs that we're paying out of the general fund. So just reminding people that that's, that is an option. You know, the question that Mr. Welty raised is that, why could we transfer one from the general fund to pay building debt and can't go backwards? It's actually a good question, which I've asked MDE, actually, many times. They don't have a very good answer for that. But I certainly look forward to having further discussion on this.
Okay, I think we strayed a bit. It's something we can talk about in the future in business meetings. And again, Mr. Leiter can update us on the costs that are pending out there, roofs. I know we're working on Congdon right now. There are, we've got a lot of buildings, and some of them are, you know, are scheduled for certain repairs, and we have to maybe have a report later on, later on. We should probably move on, so. All in favor of the, it was moved and seconded?
Yep.
Yeah, for B-12143217, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? That passes six to one with Mr. Johnston voting against it. We move on to Resolution B-12143218. Ms. Loflerkemp.
That's on page thirty-five, and it's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve Resolution B-12143218, Resolution of Independent School District 709 approving the terms of offering of general obligation aid anticipation certificates of indebtedness Series Twenty Fifteen A in the approximate amount of four point four million. And I do want to just mention, we did have Bob Tofti there with the Freiburger Firm, and he's our district bond counsel, and this resolution is similar to past resolutions. So again, I move Resolution B-14123218.
Is there a second? Second by member Welty. Discussion, member Welty.
Yes, this is actually very good news. In our discussion, we compared this borrowing to make sure that we cover the gaps between the state sending dollars to us. This is a great improvement over the last three years. The figures are general in my mind, but it seems to me that in the past three years, we borrowed something like twenty million dollars to cover our expenses, and we had to hang on to that money and pay for it over a course of, in excess of two hundred some days. So we would have had to pay a fair amount of interest for that. But our finances are such now that we've reduced the need to cover these absences and voids from twenty million to four point four million, and was it eighty-seven days or seventy-eight days? Is that the period of time that we're borrowing this money for? Significantly less than two hundred some.
Right in the range of ninety days, for some reason ninety-five sticks in my mind, but don't quote me on that. So you're right, it's a much shorter time period than it was before.
Whoops, did you turn your, okay, are you still on? This was indeed good news. Again, for those of you out there, state payment is, comes at a certain time, and we're still paying checks. And what this does is allow us to pay the checks until the state payment comes in. Member Johnston?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to be voting for this, but I am going to say a couple of concerns that I've got. We're just, one, we had to do the twenty million dollars in the past. We've done it for whatever, since I think I've been on the board, because the state was withholding, they kept withholding more and more money. Yeah, we were going to get it, consequently, we had to take out this twenty million dollars. It was extremely good interest rates, it was guaranteed by the state, the state guaranteed that, yes, they would give us this money, we always did. Luckily, now the state has quit doing that, they've actually paid back all the money that we, that they had withheld, and that's certainly good news, and thank goodness the state is not balancing their books on the back of school districts anymore. That's about time. But we still have this. You know, I would like to have seen this, the concerns that I've got, not a concern, I'm going to be voting for this, but just expressing a concern is that we have, no longer do we, is the state borrowing from us. I think we should be in a position where we don't have to do any short-term or long-term. Short-term is certainly good, it's going to cost us, what was it, thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars in interest, is certainly a welcome relief over whatever it was. I think we have, we're up pushing a couple hundred thousand in the past. So that's certainly a welcome relief, which I do. But I'm hoping, I would like to see us rebuild our fund balance, so when we have shortfalls, we don't have to go back and tap and pay any interest on this. That's one reason the boards in the past, that we should have fund balances, so when, yes, we always have problems keeping that cash flow going, this is just a cash flow issue, not a revenue issue. But if we had the proper fund balance that we should have, we wouldn't even have to do this, and I'm looking forward to that in the future.
And hopefully our fund balance will increase, that's what I'm looking forward to. Member Seligapunko.
Thanks, Chair Murnicki. I just want to reiterate what I did mention last week about this, because the state caused us to have to borrow so many million, the twenty-two million, year after year, twenty-one million, I've been on the board long enough that I had to go through this, because they did borrow and they shifted. So we wouldn't receive our funds until maybe six months later. But the other thing that they did that really made it difficult for districts that were fiscally responsible, as we were, and had a fund balance, is they borrowed our fund balance and made us, I mean, we could have gone into statutory operating debt, which districts that were in statutory operating debt didn't have their money taken from them. So the state really caused so much of this, and it's frustrating that we had to suffer the penalties for that. And I know I mentioned this last week, but I just wanted to make sure that the audience did know that they did that, and then the borrowing of our fund reserve caused all of that. So I am glad that they are funding education more, I mean, I think most districts could use more. It's very obvious when you can provide more teachers, smaller class sizes, more programs, it's a win-win for everyone. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All in favor of B-12143218, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes seven zero. Back to Ms. Loflerkemp.
I don't remember which one we're on here.
Just six, number six.
Six A, B, C, D.
Page thirty-five. Oh, excuse me.
Forty-one.
Yes, sorry. We're under the informational items now, and want to turn to page forty-one where it lists the expenditure contracts. And there's a kind of whole host of different programs, from after-school programming to family events to cultural presentations. So encourage the public to look at that. On page seventy-five is revenue contracts, and on page eighty-three, Carrie Leiter presented the financial management and capital project report. And then page eighty-six is policy. We'll be reviewing more on gifts to employees and school board members, and that's on page eighty-six. So I move.
Move?
The rest of the report.
Second?
Second by member Harla. Member Johnston?
Are we pulling out items?
Yeah.
Okay. One A, one. One F.
Wait one second, I'm sorry, one F?
One F.
Okay.
And I'd like to have a special vote for two C, one, and a special vote on four A, one.
So, I'm happy.
You're fine? Okay, let's see. One A, one, Mr. Johnston, member Johnston?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. That was the audit, and I want to make a few comments on that, won't be too long, but I think they're important. The auditor this year gave us some additional information, which I was welcomed, I complimented her on that. Some was the history of our students, our ADMs, average daily membership, and also talked a little bit about our fund balance, and also about our general fund per student compared to other districts. I'd like to talk about both of those a little bit. One of the items that she talked about, as I said, was student numbers. And the concern that I've got, not a concern, is pointing out that this should be a concern of all of us, that since I've been on the school board since two thousand ten, according to her report on page ten, we've lost seven hundred students. That's not good, we depend, we... that's not good. We depend, we, we get, depending on how you count it, the state figures, an average of about ten thousand dollars per student. That's a lot of money that we're missing. We know this happened. We're hoping we can do that and when I talk about the actual Waddam report, we'll talk about that a little bit too. But it does concern me that the numbers have been such a short decrease and unfortunately, we haven't bottomed out yet, I'm afraid. Another concern that I have, which is on page twelve, with the general fund expenditures per ADM. We're, again, this is running about ten thousand dollars and this is just about the general fund. The state, we're higher than the state by about, about six hundred dollars. But one, one thing that, that she didn't say, which I wish she, she should have, is our, the, the cost per student, which is our ADMs on our debt service and our construction. Back in two thousand eleven, we had, according to her, we, our general expenditures was about eleven thousand per student. If you count, include our debt service, it's twenty-eight thousand per student. Enormous amount, in fact. We have been in the top two or three districts in the state for debt service and construction for, I think, five years running now. Hopefully where that is going to change. This year, since we've, I think, for, hopefully we're done with the construction on the long-range facility plan, we're down about fifteen thousand dollars per, per student when you count our debt service. That's mainly debt service since the construction has pretty much ended. Again, that's also way up high. We're no longer in the top one or two in the state, but we are in about the top ten percent of the state based on our total costs, including debt service, that, per student, very high. And that does concern me. Another item that I'd like to bring up that I think that, you know, again, people should know is on page sixteen, and that is talking about our, as we mentioned earlier, our unrestricted fund balance. Again, we've all known all that we do have a policy that we've not been able to fulfill. We're supposed to keep about ten percent of, of our certain funds in a, in a fund balance. We haven't, that would amount to about eight points, four million dollars this year. We haven't met that since two thousand ten. And hopefully, according to the truth and taxation, we've, I'm certainly looking forward to maybe meeting that next year. But it's been, I think, pretty hard on us. We've, literally, we were down to one percent last year. And that's, I think, the reason now that we have to take these short-term debts and even the long-term debts that we took out in the past as a result of us having lost that fund balance. And I think that we have to, have we turned the corner on this? I hope so. But we shouldn't have, we should have never gotten into this position in the first place.
Yeah, I just, some of the things that she, I wanted to highlight from that, definitely took from her, that it's, you know, really healthy for us to have thirty to fifty percent of the fund balance in our, in our piece. And so, good, good piece to note, but just wanted to let the public know. So Whitley actually audits, has audited twenty-three school districts this year and has a total of sixty-four years of experience auditing as auditors. And just, just a note, I know we talk about cost per student per year, but we think about the social determinants of health for kids and investing in even just something as simple as air quality, seeing that we have kids that are in school longer with better air quality, better health, keeps them in school, just overall, is a lot more, benefits the health of our students too. So I think we can look monetarily, but we also look at all the other social determinants of health as well. So very appreciative to, to Deborah Medlin, the partner from Whitley, who had, who gave a very thorough presentation of our audit. And also want to thank the staff very much for all of their work. She said numerous times just how appreciative she was. There were, there were significant findings. They were, our staff was upfront, easy to work with. And so, just very thankful for all of the hard work that you do to get our auditors what they need and to work with the public. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I was just going to say that. I think it's important to point out that Ms. Medlin has been an auditor for a long time and she's done a number of, I know she has Minnesota State High School lead also. But I want to thank Mr. Hanson, Mr. LeBlanc, Mr. Leiter and your, your staff. She had a lot of praise for what you guys are doing. You did a nice job, what you people were doing. You did a great job and, and I've been criticized for being an optimist and I'll gladly take that criticism, gladly take that criticism. And I'm seeing a turnaround. I'm seeing this district get, get a more sturdy footing and I'm looking forward to down the line, more good news. Member Welty.
Thank you, Chair Murneke. I would also second many of the comments of Member Harla. Just as, as one small and telling detail, she did mention that there was one, one number that was wrong, but this had to do with our, actually having three-quarters of a million dollars more. And this was a result of our being very conservative. So I'd like to thank Mr. LeBlanc for, for his good services. Errors like that, of course, are, are most welcome and I hope we get a lot more of them.
More errors.
The right kind of errors are okay. I, and we've had some, by the way, I'm, I'm very pleased with this discussion of our budget. I, I think our focus on this is, is very helpful and this is the kind of stuff that makes a lot of people's eyes glaze over. But if we want to keep small student classrooms, it's the sort of thing we have to keep our, our eyes focused on and try not to have them glaze over. We've had some conversations about where we've been in the past. I think those historical things are good so we can measure where we've been and where we are. The, the comment that we have, I don't know how it would actually fit in the classroom, but the fact that we have increased the number of students per teacher by a little over one over the last twelve years is something that is concerning, to use the, the common colloquialism. I have gone back, as I've tried to reconstruct the past that I experienced when I was on the school board. I managed to keep only one board book that showed me the, the budget of the past year, the, back nineteen ninety-seven, when I was in my second year of the school board. And I made this observation to Mrs. Medlin as, as we went on. And by the way, I would say that one of her comments was that our books were in good order. And, and that was good to hear. But I pointed out to her that when I was on the board, our, our overall general fund, well, our, our tax levy was twenty-two point five million. It's almost, it's a little over ten million more than that now. It's about thirty-three million dollars. But that represents an awful lot of spending on debt servicing and there has been a, a decline in, in the amount of money we have for operations as a result. Back in nineteen ninety-seven, although we had a two, a twenty-two point five million dollar local levy, only two point five million of that was going to debt servicing for, for old bonds. Today, we've got twenty-one million dollars. That leaves of the thirty-three million dollars that we levy, only about twelve million dollars. So, so that, I think, explains why we're having some difficulty with class sizes and it means, I think, the need for a community conversation about what we actually need to, to do what we want for the children that we have. And that could be a tough one. But, but generally speaking, I just will echo that, the comments of Mrs. Medlin, that the, the budgetary process was pretty good. I did ask her if she thought it was wise educationally to make that kind of a transfer from, from education to debt servicing and she was not prepared to, to make a comment on that, just that the books were pretty good and our financial, our financial planning at least was, was, maybe not the financial planning, but at least the books were good.
Member Laffler Kemp.
Sure, I just wanted to appreciate again what Member Harla mentioned, that Deb, both the, the team of people that worked on our audit over sixty years, Deb's own experience, and also just wanted to reiterate her recognition of the professionalism of our financial department, how well-prepared they were, forthcoming with information. And the, one of the, the numbers that, we've had a lot of numbers floating around tonight, but that she said that I think is really important for, for folks to recognize that was in the audit report, is our school district spends about eleven thousand per student. So it's slightly higher than, than state average. And I thought the discussion we had around that was, was good as well. So just wanted to, I guess, make those additional comments.
Member Johnston, two C, school transportation services?
Just asking for a, just asking for a vote on that?
Oh, separate vote, okay. I don't think we have to have it moved and seconded. No, we can just, okay. All in favor of two C, one, the school transportation service? Oh, Member Harla, I'm sorry. Member Harla.
Sorry, I just wanted to, I thought there was going to be a quick discussion. I just wanted to note, for folks that are watching, our school district serves, for transportation, three hundred and fifty-five point nine four miles, square miles. And so, when we see a large budget line item for this, we have a huge number of miles that we serve. Imagine going from all the way out to Fond du Lac to Pequot Lakes and, and traveling and as, as an at-large member, I've spent a lot of time in every part of, every part of the community and still, still I'm heading to our community and our surrounding township. So again, that number is three hundred and fifty-five point nine four square miles. So, and even with that, we're the, we do have the sixth most expensive transportation budget in the state, but I do know that our transportation department does a lot to make sure that we keep our costs down. So just was very appreciative of Mr. Welms and his, his conversation and look forward to another year. And also, I think, thankful to Voyager for many years of keeping our, the percentage down in growing the price. This year, we had to have a little bit more of an adjustment, but appreciative of that. Thank you.
I'll go to Mr. Johnston and then Mr. Hanson. Mr. Johnston?
Sure, I wasn't going to say anything, but I think it's, some, some good points are here. I remember in the past, one of the things that's changed here now, and I don't know if this is going to be reflected at all in this contract, price of gases went down a lot, which is, which is welcome. I remember here a couple of years ago, when price was pushing over four dollars a gallon, the prices went up. And I'm certainly hoping here, of course, I wasn't going to say anything about this, I'm just going to vote for it, of course. But I'm hoping that we can get some, maybe some savings on that. I don't know if the contract allows such a thing or not, but certainly welcome to, reduced energy cost is welcome. And hopefully we can maybe see some savings on that as well.
And on that, I remember Mr. Welms did mention that we have diesel costs and they haven't dropped that much, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Hanson?
Just first to confirm Member Johnston's statement that when we do see favorable pricing on fuels, we will be paying less relative to that. And just, I believe Member Harla was looking at the worksheet that we handed out and I just want to clarify that we are number six out of the ten comparative districts that are represented on, on that sheet, some of which have, are similar size to us and some of which that are purposely selected outstate districts similar to ours.
And aren't we the largest area?
I believe Bemidji was the largest on that, on that sheet. And they were amazingly still significantly better than, bigger than we were, but we are the second biggest.
Okay. Member Harla.
Just want to thank you for the clarification.
All in favor of the school transportation service, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes seven zero. Mr. Johnston, Tech, C T E L L C.
Asking for a separate vote on that.
Discussion. All in favor of Tech, C T E L L C, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seven nothing. Okay, the business committee, all in favor, signified by, I'm sorry, Member Johnson?
I didn't have one F, too.
Ah, and that was my fault. One F, the Waddam projections. Oops, you are on.
Sure. Well, thank you, Member Chair. Again, I just wanted to point out again, everybody knows I worry about the Waddams. And this month, it does, concerned me. At the start of the school year, the Duluth News Tribune reported we were, had an increase in ten students over last year of about maybe five hundred. Unfortunately, comparing apples to apples, comparing last December, we're actually down fifteen, we're now down fifteen students, which is the lowest December ever on record. And that's very concerning. And I was hoping that we had reached the bottom. I'm afraid that we haven't.
All in favor of the business committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that passes six to one with Mr. Johnston voting against. Okay, we have Special Resolution, S P-12143220. It's on the back. Member Harla will read this for us. Oops, hold on. All right, Member Harla, there we go.
Resolution S P twelve dash twelve dash fourteen dash three two two zero. Be it resolved that, that Independent School District seven zero nine St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay cost incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the Minnesota School Boards Association twenty fifteen Leadership Conference in Minneapolis, Minnesota on January fifteenth through sixteenth, twenty fifteen. So I move Resolution S P dash twelve dash fourteen dash thirty-two twenty.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Sligapunko. Discussion.
Looking forward to it.
Any, any other cogent discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Questions? Is it a question? Member Harla.
I just, I want to take a moment to thank you, Chair Murneke, for the last year that you, that you've served as Chair of our board and.
You're out of order.
You're, no. With, which is really appreciate the time and commitment you've put in and your service to our board and appreciate that for two thousand and fourteen, through everything we've gone through. Appreciate your positivity and your heart.
Thank you, Member Laffler Kemp.
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank you, Chair Murneke, for allowing me to be the Business Committee Chair this year. I learned a ton. But also wanted to thank you for helping kind of mentor us as new board members and always making sure we had the information we needed and answering questions, et cetera. And just really appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Student, my favorite student, no, no, both of you are. I'd rather talk to students than anybody else. Mr. Manning?
Okay, I just want to say, I want to third Ms. Harla's motion. I agree. It was, it was a wonderful time this year. I, yeah, I will say that. There was a lot of education that was done behind these school board meetings that may have looked otherwise. A lot of great actions that were taken, especially the language immersion, working on extracurriculars like debate team happened for the first time in Duluth, which I'm really excited that happened. Just all the student achievements that have happened in the past year are largely thanks to the school board. So thanks for taking the time to be a school board member and making education a priority. I don't know. This summer, I'll be going to DC, so I do appreciate the experience you gave me with some interesting.
Exactly the same.
Yep, exactly. So should be prepared after this experience, but it was good overall. So thank you for that.
Representative Tremble.
All right. I just want to thank all of you again for the stuff they do with, over the, basically the year. It's really opened my eyes about how the schools, the school districts are run and what goes into it. And I've really enjoyed the time that I spent on this board, so thank you.
Not to speak for the entire board. Not to speak for the entire board, we are going to miss you, too. You gave us a lot of input, and we want to congratulate you and wish you the very best in your careers. You are very intelligent, outgoing people, and I think we're going to see you guys in the future. So congratulations, look forward to commencement. Mr. Westholm.
This will be real short, but I just want to congratulate our two students also, and it really helps to get students perspective, perspectives on all this stuff. So thank you for your efforts, and I know you'll be successful coming down the road.
Thank you. Oh, Member Sligapunko.
Kind of missed me. I do want to thank the students, too. And one point I want to make is I've seen both of them, they're both in band, play instruments, and it's really impressive. I just want to point that out because musical kids do a great job with a lot of different endeavors, and they both did a great job this year, so I really appreciate it. And Chair Murneke, I really appreciate what you've done this year and serving as clerk with you. It worked well. I do have one thing I do want to mention, and we, as a board, need to send a message of being consistent. And so I do think we need to look at school board members' behavior, whether it's outside of the board or in closed sessions. I do think it's something that we do need to address in the next couple of weeks. So I just want to put that out there because it is something that is concerning when the public is telling us that we have school board members that are misbehaving, and we've seen it, too. So I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Oh, I was hoping to end this on a positive. Member Johnston.
So was I.
With that, oh.
My light is on here. Yeah, I would certainly second what was just said by Sligapunko. I think that, as we've heard here many times, that there's a lot of, what we do is read the paper, look at our email, the dissatisfaction from the public toward us is amazing. And it's, I've made requests many times to have parliamentarians, team building, it's always been rejected. And so I am all in favor of it. It's about time.
I wish you all a very blessed holiday season. We are adjourned.